Oh, now I hope I didn't just mess it up. Okay. All right. Okay, good. Good. All right, well, I might have to use the gavel. No, I'm gonna never use the gavel. All right, hello. Good evening. Okay, I've gotta use the gavel. All right, I didn't have to, just the threat of it. Anyway, good evening and welcome to the November 13th Planning Commission meeting. So, roll call?
Commissioner Douglas.
President.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Nemirov.
Here.
Commissioner Melton.
Here.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Barubi.
Here.
Commissioner Miranda. Chair Olson.
Here. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the actual approval of the agenda. Did anyone have any edits or changes to the agenda? Or anyone want to make a recommendation to approve?
Can we approve the agenda?
Sir, second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Next, the approval of the meeting minutes from October 23rd, 2019. Did anybody have any comments or edits to those minutes? Go ahead, Sue.
There were just some minor edits. Page three of seven at the top. I just wanted to note, because after having attended a planning commissioners' training, we are trying to establish more abbreviated notes and keep them kind of concise. I think, though, that the summary is pretty important. So, at the top of the paragraph where it says commissioners summarized what they thought were driving factors for approval of the variance, including resounding neighbor approval, applicant was sincere. Those two things actually, we learned, don't really count in a true variance request. So, I would just, I'd like to keep it for the record, but could we move that to the back of that sentence? So that its many issues encumber the property, the setback was adequate, and many consistencies already exist in the area, resounding neighbor approval, and applicant was sincere. The following paragraph, just, "Planning Commission approve," not approved, the 32.8-foot setback. And the third sentence, Commissioner Bennett seconded the motion, missing the word seconded. Same thing at the top of the following page. It's the Planning Commission approve the four-foot, five-inch height. Same page down towards the bottom, discussion, comments, questions, commissioners voiced their appreciation. And at the bottom of the page, Commissioner Lee approve, again, approve the signed variance. And then, this is just a comment on page six. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it was on page five, the public hearing. I know that we are trying to, again, stay brief during the public comments. I think it would be sufficient to just note the name and address of the person who spoke from the public and maybe a one-sentence sort of summary in favor or against. I don't think, on the following page under, as much as I love hope, I don't think we need to do bulletproof, bullets for bulletproof, bullets for the comments. The reason being because that was a very short evening, but it can get a little tedious if we're gonna be starting to record bullet points of people in favor or against. So, I would leave it for this time, but it's more of a comment for the future. We're trying to not even put our specific comments as bullet points. So, I think that is, in some ways, a little overextended. Under discussion, comments, and questions, second to last bullet, the city, I think that was Commissioner Bennett's comment, perhaps? I'm not sure if that really reads what he was trying to say. The city is responsibility to start laying the foundation of those pathways, so there could be more of a master plan for the general open areas. I think the point was, the city should be responsible, or it is the city's responsibility to start laying a foundation of those pathways, so that there can be more of a master plan for the general open areas. General open areas was the public realm we were talking about. So, I don't know if you want to weigh in on that?
Sounds good.
Did you catch that? Okay. "Excited to see affordable housing coming to Edina with a variety of people." I'm not sure if we actually said that, but I think what we're trying to say is a diversity with a greater diversity. That's it.
Do you want to say something, Carrie?
Yeah, just to add, this will be the last set of minutes where they're more detailed. As you recall, from our discussion last time, the more revised or condensed minutes start November 1st. So, this will be the first meeting with that revised format. Nope, this is the old style.
Okay. Well, I didn't know that either. I didn't know when it was going into effect, so that's good. Okay. Any other, does anyone want to make a, do you want to make a motion then, Sue? Or were there any other comments on the minutes? Or go ahead, I.
I'll make a motion to approve them with the edits suggested by Commissioner Lee.
All right. Any, has her second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Thank you. So, next on the agenda is the community comment, and this is when the community has an opportunity to speak to the planning commission on an item that's not on the agenda tonight. So, was there anyone here who had an item other than on our agenda that they wanted to bring forth? And, seeing now, we'll move on. We have two public hearings tonight. The first one is a variance request at 4617 Cascade Lane.
The subject property is 4617 Cascade Lane and is approximately 12,500 acres and is located south of Cascade Lane, just north of Minnehaha Creek. The existing home on the lot is a story and a half structure that was built in 1941. The subject property is currently under construction due to a remodel, an interior remodel that includes an addition over the existing garage. The applicant tonight is requesting a variance for a garage addition that does not meet the required side yard setback. The proposed garage addition is approximately four feet by 19 feet, or around 76 square feet. The subject property is irregular in shape and therefore only a small portion of the requested addition encroaches into the required side yard setback. The northwest corner of the proposed addition is 6.9 feet from the property line and is the reason the applicant is requesting a 3.1-foot side yard setback variance. With the exception of the setback, the proposed garage addition meets all other zoning requirements. The proposed drainage paths are similar to existing drainage paths on the lot. The environmental engineer has reviewed the application and has submitted comments attached in a memorandum. The property is also located within a flood plain, and due to that, the engineering department has also included a letter to the applicant which outlines the substantial improvement determination due to the flood plain. So, the applicant's remodel and the proposed work needs to meet those requirements that's outlined in that letter, and the applicant is aware of that. This is the proposed survey. You can see the garage, proposed garage addition is this small portion, kind of grayed out, and it's, the closest to the property line is 6.9 feet. You can see the proposed elevations. This is the garage addition that is currently under construction. You can see pictures of it. I believe they're doing some interior remodel work. The applicant can answer any of those questions. Tonight, the subject or the variance, requested variance includes this garage addition just to the right of the existing garage. So, you can see the proposed front elevation from the rear and also from the side. This is the existing house with the garage addition and with the proposed addition that you're looking at tonight, or that's before you tonight, in context with the neighbors, and just a closer up portion, or a picture of the house with, this is the side of the garage that the proposed addition is on. The practical difficulty is the irregular shaped lot. The lot's pie-shaped and is narrower towards the street and gets wider as it moves towards the creek. The garage addition solves a functional concern that allows a second car to park in the garage. The requested variance is minimal and will help with the functionality of the existing home. The applicant is trying to improve the existing structure and is requesting the variance to park two vehicles in the garage. Stat believes that the granting the variance will not alter the character of the neighborhood. The proposed setback is similar to non-existent, or existing non-conforming setbacks in the neighborhood. Tonight, staff's recommended action is to approve a 3.1-foot side yard setback variance for the proposed garage addition at 4617 Cascade Lane, subject to the findings and conditions outlined in the staff report. And with that, I'll stand for any questions, and the applicant is also here tonight to answer any of your questions.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for staff? No? Okay. Go ahead, Sue.
Thank you, Emily. What is the minimum? We try to keep at least one side, one of the side yards, right? At a minimum of, is it 10 feet?
The required side yard for this lot is 10 feet.
But in general, is it, is it, we can, we're always trying to, at a minimum, have 10 feet on one of the side yards?
No, the minimum setback for, depending on the width of the lot, but the narrower lots go down to five feet for a required setback.
Five feet. Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Emily. Is the applicant here? Would they like to speak? You don't have to, but we'd like to have you. Come on up.
See if this works here, a little height restriction here.
Yeah, lean down.
First of all, thank you, Emily, for presenting. We appreciate your support, the board. We appreciate your support and your, away from your families. I can appreciate that. The neighbor to the direct west, who is here tonight as well, I want to note, they're in support of this as well. Again, thanking you. As you can see by my size, some things I don't fit in, as well as this garage. My wife and I, or my wife is from Edina, I'm from a rural town in South Dakota, and we decided to move back. Edina was where we wanted to live. We loved the community. We appreciated the neighborhood on the creek, and we loved everything about the neighborhood and the home. As you can see, again, with my size, there were some houses we looked in that I just physically didn't fit in. This house worked for us, because I can fit through all the doorways. We did do an addition to the upstairs, as Emily eloquently stated, which now fits me. So, the garage is the second challenge that we're working on, and we appreciate your support tonight, that I'll be able to park our car in the garage, which helps our neighbors, Charlie and Shar, who do a great job of keeping our community clean. They do a great job of aesthetically, probably some of the best that I see. And we want to remove the car out. It also removes garbage cans out of the side of our house as well, so trying to keep the aesthetics and neighborhood clean. It also eliminates opportunity theft with one car being out of the street. So, in closing, we appreciate your support. This is something where we're trying to keep the aesthetics of the neighborhood. Our remodel was with builders by design who do a good job of restoration. We like the character and the charm, and we further think that this supports all that. And I don't know if I want to pass it to Charlie and Shar if they have anything to say with their support, but we thank you for your time and appreciate your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant before he sits down? No, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
All right. So, this is also a public hearing, and is there anyone who wants to speak? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
Sir, second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, bringing it back to the planning commission, any other comments? Motions? Go ahead, I.
I just wanted to say that I thought this was a textbook case. I don't think you could define, I don't think we could come up with a case study that better defined an appropriate subject for a variance. Bringing, moving from a single-car garage to a two-car garage, minimal impact on the setback, still meets with a five-foot minimum, so you can get construction equipment in the backyard if you need it. It has the other improvements that the applicant mentioned. I agree with Commissioner Lee that neighbor liking or disliking isn't something we should consider, but even in this case, it's nice to see the neighbors are in favor of it. So, I consider this just the textbook case for approval of a variance, and I'll make a motion to approve it unless anyone else wants to speak.
I did want to compliment on this whole application, that it was very helpful to receive all those photographs. Obviously, we try to get there and drive around and see it, but weather being as it is, it's not always possible either. But, just like Commissioner Nemirov said, this is a very textbook case in that, obviously, the right, a lot of the side yard setbacks are put there for a reason, but they don't apply to all parcels equally. What was of a concern is that this is encroaching, by the situation of the adjacent house, it's encroaching into the, basically, the front yard of the adjacent house. So, that's where it does matter if that particular resident does have some strong feelings about it, because it is trying to balance sort of equal opportunity owner rights. So, I did appreciate the fact that that did have a sign-off. It's not the only factor, but it certainly helps in these particular cases. So, thank you for a full and complete report on that. Staff report was good, as well as the application.
Okay. Thank you. Jimmy?
I'll second. If that motion stands.
It sits, but...
Okay.
Noted.
All right. Any other comments?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Thank you. Enjoy it. All right. So, the next public hearing is the 2018 Comprehensive Plan Update. And we have our consultants who are gonna present.
Please. Good evening. I'm Bill Smith with BCO Associates, the project manager for the city's comprehensive plan update. With me this evening are Hila Mays, she's from Bolton &amp; Meek, and Dan Cornejo with Cornejo Consulting. So, we're just three of the many team members who worked on this plan. Tonight is our opportunity to present to you, well, where we are now. We're getting very, very close to wrapping this up, and so I think we'll all be very happy about that. I want to comment at the beginning that this isn't the end, and that there are plenty of opportunities remaining for community members to become involved and to speak and to make their opinions known. So, while we're getting close to the end, this is still a draft. It needs to go to the Met Council for approval, and Hila's gonna talk about that. So, this evening, though, I'd like for you to hear, well, we're going to address, let me move on, do I push?
Room to chairs.
There. Tonight, our presentation is really primarily about a couple of things, the revisions that have made since you last saw the plan, and we had public hearings before you and also before City Council, that was back in May, and then next steps. But, for the sake of people who may not have been involved in the process, who were new to it, we wanted to do a very quick overview of the background of the plan, the process that was involved, public meetings that were held, and the schedule. And then we'll get to what I think is the most important part of the presentation tonight, and that's the revisions that have been made. By the way, there's a handout that's available for community members, and I think you have it as well, that's outside for them to pick up, and this provides sort of a more detailed presentation of that background information I referred to. So, what is a comprehensive plan? I'm sure you know, and you've heard several times, but again, for the sake of those who have not been involved, the comprehensive plan is a guide. It's a framework, and it really talks about development, redevelopment, and community enhancement. As I mentioned, it's a guide, and it's not a prescription. Why do we do this comprehensive planning? Well, a couple of reasons. There was the Metropolitan Land Planning Act of 1976 that requires every municipality, and in fact, counties, to update their comprehensive plans every 10 years. Dan Cornejo, back in 2008, was the lead planner on the city's 2008 plan, a member of our team. So, this is now 10 years later, the 2018 plan. The Metropolitan Planning, Land Planning Act requires, identifies required chapters that include land use, housing, regional parks and trails, transportation, and water resources. And the Metropolitan Council, for the first time in this round of 10-year updates, encourages the communities, cities in the metro, to address economic competitiveness and resiliency. Those two items are not requirements, however. Pardon me. The required topics really deal with regional systems, and the Metropolitan Council with its responsibility to administer and deliver regional facilities, transportation, water resources, et cetera. Of course, you can understand why they would be interested in getting a handle on each community's contribution to the region. I mentioned that there, that this is a regional plan, but it's also an opportunity for cities to take a look at local issues that have some relationship to, but not necessarily a keen relationship to, regional planning. And so, Edina elected to address arts and culture, community facilities and services, community health, environment and energy, heritage preservation, human rights and relations, and local economic development and local parks. So, those are electives that the city decided to take. Let me get Dan Cornejo to help me out here now. Wanted to give you some background information on small area planning, which was a major effort during this comprehensive planning effort.
Thank you, Bill. The comprehensive plan in total is a policy framework for shaping the citywide growth and change, and so that's why the, through our planning process with you and the community, we looked at the required systems and also these other systems that are more local, and looked at that, looked at all of those systems, but the small area plans, take it, it drills down just a little bit more. The small area plans advance the comprehensive plans' core principles, but then it adapts them to local conditions. And so, there, back 10, 12 years ago, there were several areas that were identified as potential areas of change that were not addressed in depth back in 2008. They were this round. And the first one was the Wooddale Valley View. That was actually, was completed just prior to the formal start of this 10-year update. So, that was the first one in 2016, but during the last two years, we've looked at 44th and France, 50th and France, the Greater Southdale District, the 750-acre district, and then 70th and Cahill. Our consultant team, the planning commission, and local task forces looked at those areas in depth and came up with comprehensive plans, or sorry, with small area plans for each of those areas. And the reason those were looked at in depth was because they were seen as potential areas of change, and during the past 10 years, they have experienced much of the change that's gone on in Edina. So, now they have plans for the future, so that those changes can all work together. All of these small area plans have been approved over the past year or so, and they will form part of the comprehensive plan. Just, the next slide shows a little bit, Bill, help me here, do I press N?
You're as bad as I am.
There we go. Okay. Thank you. Whoops, I went backwards on that.
Well, you're worse than I am.
There we go. Okay. Thank you. This was an iterative process. We've gone back and forth on it. The small area plans, what you see here are four bullet points, but they're kind of the objectives of why we do small area planning, but they're also a little bit looking towards what do we want the outcomes to be. And so, in total, these small area plans, the idea is to preserve the integrity of the single-family and low-density neighborhoods, and those areas are really about 90, 93% of the city, the single-family neighborhoods. So, the idea is to preserve their integrity. There will be changes there, as you know. There are new homes, some requiring variances, some not, but so they'll change. But, most of the change will be in the 7% that's covered by the small area plans. The idea is to focus redevelopment to those areas. Also, because they're experiencing the most change, this is an opportunity for those areas to have complementary transit services and other kinds of mobility enhancements, such as bike trails, so that they're, they complement each other. And then, there's also a chance that sustainable infrastructure improvements that are not related necessarily to transportation can also be folded in, so that, just to give you an example, in the Greater Southdale District Small Area Plan, there's a tremendous opportunity to deal with stormwater management there, in the Pentagon Park area and Southdale proper. There's been flooding. So, the idea is these plans have the guidance for those complementary systems to actually work and to complement each other. So, the small area plans, in summary, then, are where the city of Edina will see most of the change, will also probably make the most public investments, and where, if there are any new things to happen that we haven't anticipated, and a comprehensive planning process can anticipate everything, it's not a, we can't predict the future. But, the idea is that there are the policies there at the ground level to guide your decision-making, to guide redevelopers who want to come to Edina to make changes. It's their plan, too. And also, for the citizens to use it, when they see if the plan's being followed or not, it's their, they can use it as a guide as well. I'm gonna turn it back to Bill now.
Thanks. So, the planning process, it's been two years, and there's been a lot of work that's gone on. The consultant team has worked pretty hard. You have worked very hard. I remember having, I think, at least five meetings with you where we addressed one topic, not to mention there were work group meetings for the small area plans. So, there's been a lot of effort. Staff has been tremendous on this as well. When I think about the hallmarks of this planning process, it was led by the planning commission, by the comprehensive planning task force. The focus was on identified areas of change in the city. It was built on a foundation that was provided by Vision Edina from 2015, and I'd like to mention that planning processes typically start with a vision exercise, and we did not do that for this one, because you had done that already in 2015, and it provided us with a vision to build this process on. This process was informed by citizens, community members, residents, businesses, who had opportunities to attend work group meetings, planning commission hearings. Even those meetings that were held during the work groups provided opportunities for residents to comment at the conclusion of those meetings. And the final... And I like to mention that planning processes typically start with a vision exercise. And we did not do that for this one, because you had done that already in 2015, and it provided us with a vision to build this process on. This process was informed by citizens, community members, residents, businesses, who had opportunities to attend work group meetings, Planning Commission hearings. Even those meetings that were held during the work groups provided opportunities for residents to comment at the conclusion of those meetings. And the final recommendations on this plan were made by the commissions and by the work groups. Of course, the final decision is going to be council's. Public meetings, I mentioned, we couldn't have done this without input from the public. Over 180 public meetings occurred between February of 2017 and November of 19. Here we are. So it was 179 before tonight. So, and just, this is a list of the types of meetings that were held during that whole time. Our schedule. Tonight, we are having, we've just completed the six-month review. And to remind you of that, when we got to a certain stage back in May, we sent our draft out to adjacent municipalities and to affected agencies. So adjacent municipalities include Minneapolis, Richfield, Bloomington, Minnetonka, St. Louis Park, Hopkins, I think I've got them all, Eden Prairie. Agencies included the watershed districts, the three public school districts, Hennepin County, Mendot. So all the agencies and municipalities were included. They had six months to review. So that's where we just completed, and tonight we're holding this hearing before you. To come will be a hearing before the council on December 3rd, and then we send the plan to the Met Council. And Hylla, again, is going to talk more about that. Let me turn this over to Hylla now to talk about what has occurred since you last saw this plan.
Thank you. So as Bill just spoke to you about, the six-month review period has just wrapped up, I think last week, so just recently. Again, the opportunity for this, the process is so long, because it is a very deliberative one, and the Met Council and the state statute that guides it have a very intentional amount of time built in there, so that anyone who has any comments on any level can participate. And one thing to note about the six-month review period is, it's quite a lot of time. There's, all the jurisdictions in the region have this opportunity, so they want to make sure it was an adequate amount of time. And if the DNR has to review 180 plans, they have time to do it. All that said, we did not get a lot of comments during that time period. You're looking up, as you look at the screen right here, you'll see some of the agencies that commented. Nobody else really provided any written comments. There were some opportunities. City staff and leadership met with a couple of the school districts, Edina and Richfield, and there certainly were conversations with other communities in the area and with other jurisdictions. But none of them, except for the comments you see here, saw fit the need to submit comments. We're going to say that's a positive thing. This would be the opportunity if they wanted to flag something, to say, "We have a problem here, we have a concern here." It should be a good chance to go on record. The comments we received, I would say, are relatively minor. So that's just a note for the process, that it has been robust, and that it's not, at least in this, during this six-month period, triggering concern from these regulatory agencies and from the next-door neighbors of Edina. I'll go through these comments quickly. They're also reflected in the draft we have before you. The red line draft particularly, which is available online, highlights what areas have changed for people who want to track. Hennepin County and Mendot really didn't have any substantive comments. They did look through both of the, all the documents and had a few tweaks to the transportation chapter. Three Rivers Park District just wanted to make sure all of the naming and the labeling was correct and consistent with their standards as a regional park entity for this area. And Bloomington just looked at the close in areas of the boundary conditions where roadway and water sewer infrastructure are shared or kind of need to be collaborated across. And largely, their comments were along the lines of ensuring consistency and clarity in terms of what's been accomplished and a partnership working forward. So, pretty straightforward comments there. Nothing really saying major changes to the plan. We do have some other comments, and we use this opportunity to do some other housekeeping, some other updates to the plan as well, just to ensure that we're reflecting all the conversations to date. The chapters were generally reviewed and revised, correct obvious, any little typos or grammatical errors or any inconsistencies in the formatting. And also, just to make sure that there, these documents were filled together. One thing we did not do, and I want to highlight this because it was discussed during the review by the Planning Commission and Council last time, there was a talk about sort of standardizing the language and sort of format more across all the chapters that was reviewed. And it was decided that the chapters are, they are a bit different from one another. They're not all the same format, things are in a little different format. But that's largely because they are the hard work of all your boards and commissions who spent a tremendous amount of time working on this, and they reflect the direction and the guidance of those groups. And it was felt that, to be, to respect all the work that went into that to date, the chapters are a bit different. But again, your commissions have different focuses and different skill sets and different subject matter expertise. So, there's consistency such as it is, but as you read this, you'll see that the, shall I say, the personality is in the commissions, so it comes across. But again, respecting the process, keeping that moving forward. Revisions in response to the questions concerned raised by community members. While this wasn't, the six-month wasn't really official public comment period, the same way the previous period was, and those comments were responded to during that period, we did receive some comments, and we used it as an opportunity to clean things up and to clarify some things. Largely, those are not, again, not about changing the plan, but clarity and consistency. I did skip a slide, didn't I? I just realized that we flipped through this one. I also wanted to note that this, the comments in here include the ones that were received during the public hearing process earlier on, when, before the plan was sent out. 95 comments were received at that time, and consultants were directed to respond to about half of them in terms of changes to the plan. I should note that all of the comments were responded to. That's documented. There's a response for every single one of them. About half resulted in actual changes to the plan, which were in the current draft. The other half had other responses along the lines of, "It's already addressed," "It's an editorial comment that's not asking for a change," or "It's a direction to the appropriate staff member to make some additional, do additional work that's outside the comp plan but still important." So we have a response to every comment received to date. And the treatment of the comments are in a response to comment report, which is available to the public. I did want to spend a little time on two sets, two chapters, because an awful lot of our comments focused on two particular chapters. I think they're, because they're of a great interest to the community and because they had a lot of input from different areas. The land use chapter in particular had a lot of time spent on it, including the five meetings, which you may recall, you spent, as Bill mentioned. We did spend, we also received a lot of detailed comments from the public, and so we spent time going through this and making sure that it was as clear as possible. The discussion around growth forecasts has been added to, just to make sure it's clear why the growth forecasts are where they are, how they changed over time, how they are used, what they mean and what they don't mean. There's a description of how, what are the benefits of new growth to the community, but also discussion of how the plan mitigates impacts, because there can be impacts that need to be addressed from new growth, and that, and the plan spends more time on that. There's more detail on mixed center, use center guidance. The 50th and France plan, which is mixed use center, was kind of getting wrapped up at the same time as the comp plan was. We went, we had to spend some time to make sure that that fit together consistently. And we made some small changes to the land use calculations. The numbers are not substantially different, but honestly, we received some very detailed feedback from the public in terms of those, and we wanted to make sure we would go through them with a fine-tooth comb and make them as consistent as possible. We want to say a special thank you to one of our community members who picked out, pointed out that the little green park, I don't know if you can even see it on the screen, but in the grand view area, there's a small one-acre park that we had inadvertently left out of the mixed use district. So thank you for, people who pointed that out, we've added that to the map, and the calculations reflect a change to that. One note about the calculations, those are not a regulatory tool per se. If you look at the plan and say, "Why does it say we'll use five acres in this district in this decade?" It does not mean that the city is committing to that. It is largely a math exercise to demonstrate the ability of the city to accommodate those areas, the growth within those areas, as a mathematical use of acreage. Anyone who's interested and wants to spend some time in more detail, I've offered to offline, spend time on walking through those and how those work. But again, the focus of the land use chapter is on this map itself, which is the point of making sure it's extra clear to the public and to you, including making sure it's available in high-res version, and the categories and definitions of the guidance. Those would be the ones used to move forward with decisions. We've also added some additional captions to make sure that the pictures used are clear, why we are using those and what they mean, and some additional details, just again, so that people understand what's in there and why it's used. There were changes to the housing chapter as well. A lot of these are related to clarity and consistency of language. We know that housing is an important issue, and that there's even been a housing task force tasked with ongoing work, which may at some point, though not at this point, result in additional revisions to this chapter. The forecast and change areas are clarified here, too, again, to make sure it's clear what they mean. There's more definition on some of the housing tools, so that's, again, clear why there are, what they are used, and some clarifications on the housing trends facing the community. Again, there may be ongoing work, and that was certainly a focus in the last time of saying, the early implementation work of the housing task force, which this plan recommends, will continue for some time to spend more and look more in-depth into those issues that need more focus. As Bill was saying, this is winding to a close. It's not quite there yet, but we're getting close. We have today's review by Planning Commission and City Council date, and with a plan to submit as scheduled by extension to the Met Council by the end of this year. Any comments received during this, and the City Council will be sort of wrapped up into a package that will be digitally submitted to the Met Council. Bill and I actually spent some time meeting with the staff this afternoon, just to go through the process in detail, go through any concerns, highlight things that they've encountered in past processes, and basically troubleshoot to make sure we're as prepared as possible for that process and can have a good communication with them. The initial review period, they will just start looking through that and see if there's any questions they have, and there may be some back and forth with staff and consultant and the Met Council if there's anything that they can't find. I think we've heard from staff that the total package being submitted will probably be upwards of 4,000 pages. There's a lot of documentation. It's not always clear where things are, so we'll work with them to make sure they can check all their boxes. Their own council and CD committee will approve the plan. It'll come back to the city. If there's any tweaks that are necessary during that period, those will be ironed out, and then there'll be sort of the final, final time that this comes back to Planning Commission and Council after the council has approved it. And at that point, there'll be adoption and implementation, including any needed changes to your zoning or any other regulatory changes. And I think that's it, right?
I think so. Are we ready to accept any questions? This one.
All right, wonderful. So do we have questions for the consultants? Go ahead, Sue.
Thank you for that overview. And I have to say that the document really has come together. I'm very appreciative of all the work that went into the formatting. It really, really looks great, very professional. I just had a question regarding, and it's just more of a, sort of a process. I know that the numbers of projections, the population forecast and that comes more or less from Met Council, but it's also a result of sort of what happens in our community and development that's ongoing now. One of the things about the comp plan is that it takes, it's supposed to cover about 10 years. Would, and I've heard other communities suggest that those population figures be revisited. Would you have a timeframe on something like that and how often that might be looked at? And how does that then get updated in the comp plan?
I could, I could start to address that. There, the minimum standard for addressing them is once every 10 years, associated with the comp plan cycle. And indeed, with the 2020 census next year, that does actually, we're just wrapping up, it already starts, starts to over again the 10-year process as the, as the Met Council receives that information, starts recalibrating their numbers to sort of take whatever forecasts they have and sort of square them with that and move forward. They, they do reserve the right to have some discretionary changes. If there is a substantial change in the market, for instance, won't speculate anything about the economy, but if something changes and there, and some of the trends that seemed predictable have changed dramatically, it might be an opportunity. But my understanding is those are purely discretionary, except for the standard 10-year cycle. Again, the census will provide an opportunity to sort of recalibrate, but whether or not that results in anything that's meaningful change is still to be seen at this point.
I just have a comment. I want to thank you guys for your incredibly hard work in rallying the community around this thing and getting us all together and teaching us a lot in the process. So thanks. It's come together really beautifully, and it's something we should all be proud of.
Thank you.
Yes, Sudeep, yeah, just a quick follow-up. It was a pleasure working with the team, you know, Bill and your whole team. And it seems like a long time ago we started this. But I like Dan's opening, that the emphasis on the plan, the bulk of the plan, is focused on these potential areas of growth, these small area plans. And I know how much work the individuals up here put on their various duties on those plans. And that, that's the, the, the plan does, I think, reflect that it's directed at where the activity is going to be. You know, 93% of the city is essentially, you know, right? I mean, and so the plan did a great amount, I mean, focused to a great extent on the areas where the activity was going to happen. So I think it's going to be a valuable document. Thank you.
I think it was really a wise move for your 2008 council to recognize those areas of potential change, and then for staff and Planning Commission to set this up for this particular 2018 update to really focus on those areas. This is, this will help to ensure that that 93% does stay the same, and that, as you mentioned, Jerry, future development is, will be directed and guided to take place in those other areas.
Are there any other specific questions? I mean, we can come back and make more general comments, too, after the public hearing, but were there any specific questions for the consultant at this time? Okay. Thanks. So this is a public hearing, and anyone who'd like to speak could come to either of the podiums and just state your name and address. And you get three minutes, so keep an eye on the lights.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Planning Commission members. My name is Steve Brown. I live at 5528 Halifax Lane. I'm here to speak tonight in support of the 2018 comprehensive plan update, and to urge you to approve it tonight as it currently stands and forward it to the City Council for their approval. I'll start by thanking all of you for all the hours you have personally put into creating this plan, reviewing the plan, attending meetings and open houses to gather public input to this plan, and working as co-chairs on the small area planning groups. Having attended many of the Planning Commission public hearings on this plan, I can attest to the high quality of the discussion regarding many elements of the plan, and that is a great credit to all of you. As a result of this careful thought, listening, and hard work, it is a remarkably coherent and robust document. Now, this document is designed to address a couple of very simple things. First, it addresses the question of how much are we projected to grow, and where do we want that growth to occur? This will help ensure that the infrastructure, such as water and sewer, transit, and housing needed to support this growth, is in the right place. As noted earlier, this leaves 93% of Edina unchanged, and it focuses the growth on 7% of Edina, which I think is perfectly appropriate. Secondly, it addresses the question of what do we want these areas of growth to look like? All the small area plans do an excellent job of providing guidelines for these areas. This plan is not prescriptive. It provides direction and guidelines. Yes, the zoning ordinance will be changed to reflect the broad direction of the plan as required by law. But the intent here is simply to limit the potential for side deals, negotiations, and excessive use of variances to undermine the broad outlines of the plan. The plan offers guidance and flexibility. As Bill brilliantly illustrated, this plan represents an evolution, not a revolution. It started way back in, you could say, certainly 2015, but perhaps even earlier than that in 2006 and 2008. On a final note, I'll ask you not to delay the plan at this point. Yes, there is a housing task force hard at work, but their timeline is now extended out well past the due date for this plan. Their work will provide the foundation for the next round of comprehensive planning, as well as informing the Planning Commission and City Council on how to interpret the guidance provided by the plan. I urge you to approve the comprehensive plan as it stands. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Jackson. I live at 5716 Continental Drive here in Edina. I'm also the Chair of the Energy and Environment Commission, and I wanted to thank you for the process of bringing all the commissions together. It was an incredible experience. I think everybody enjoyed getting to know one another and then to see how our different commissions cross over and interplay with each other. So I want to say thank you for that, and thanks for the consultants for making that happen as well. It was really, it was a wonderful process, and I think this final document also reflects this interaction among the different commissions. And I just want to point out that we in the Environment Commission asked everybody to think about the environment, and I know the Arts and Culture Commission said the same thing, and the Human Rights Commission, and we all want, I love the integration of all of our thoughts. This plan is focused on the future and what it's going to look like, and as an environmentalist, it's very high on my mind to always think about how our planet is changing and how our world is changing, and I think we've made some big strides in the land use, in the coordination among the different parts to address that future. So thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Planning Commissioners. I too want to thank you for all of your excellent work. Every time I confront this plan, I am awed by the tremendous community-wide effort that has been involved. My name is Hope Melton. I live at 4825 Valley View Road in Edina. My statement supports approval of Edina's 2018 comprehensive plan without changes or amendments that would impact the zoning code flexibility in the housing or the land use chapter. This comprehensive plan at its core is about who we are as a community and who we want to become over the next 10 years. Nothing better answers those fundamental questions than the 2015 vision Edina that began the comp plan development process. This plan reflects that vision. These are the vision's core principles. First, we are inclusive and connected in order to create a diverse community. In other words, we are a community dedicated to equity and diversity. Affordable housing is key to those goals. Second, we work together for environmental sustainability. In other words, we recognize the urgent challenge of climate change. We understand that the interrelated components of this plan, housing, zoning, density, land use patterns, and modes of transportation, will impact our carbon emission levels and resilience to climate change. Approximately 30% of total carbon emissions comes from cars and trucks. Greater residential density and a broad spectrum of affordable housing supports more and better transit, reduces commuting traffic and carbon emissions. In this sense, housing policy is climate policy. Third, we are a city of learning that is not afraid to adapt and change as circumstances change. The plan envisioned states we are not afraid of population growth and development, but seek to address it in focused development that will ensure a safe, economically competitive, and sustainable Edina into the future. This plan provides the flexibility we need to meet changing circumstances, political, economic, cultural, demographic, over the next 10 years. That flexibility with zoning regulations, for example, is absolutely essential for the city to meet its affordable housing goals. For many years, the city of Edina avoided taking its regional fair share of affordable housing by using rigid, low-density zoning codes that precluded its financial feasibility. This plan is a very important change in that direction. Finally, we are future-oriented, sharing responsibility for decision-making, and working collectively towards our common vision. Democratic decision-making means working together, commissions, council, residents, precisely as you all have done towards our common goals. I urge you to approve Edina's comprehensive plan as written. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I put something up on the overhead or no?
Yeah, they'll kind of have to move that keyboard, and then you'll have to use that microphone.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Roberta Castellano, 4854 France Avenue South. Over the course of the past year, I've repeatedly raised concerns about how the city has been conducting the comprehensive planning process, and this remains a chief concern. Two comprehensive plan public hearings were conducted earlier this year on April 24 at Planning Commission and May 7 at City Council. As just one example of problems, I would like to review page 13 of the staff presentation for both hearings, and that's what's on the overhead right now. In just this one page, the city of Edina, one, falsely reported the current housing unit density range for medium-density residential; two, falsely represented that the city is not changing the density range for the medium-density residential category going forward; three, falsely reported that the increases in density only impact land within the greater Southdale area; four, falsely represented that the greater Southdale District residential was a pre-existing category; five, falsely represented the density going forward for 50th and France as compared to what the city actually entered into the draft comp plan, something I subsequently addressed; six and seven, falsely represented the going-forward density and the going-forward land use category for the mixed-use center at Southdale as compared to what the city has actually entered into the draft comp plan; eight, falsely represented that the city is not proposing to change the land use category of any land in the city, which also contradicts a statement of intent that is found in the draft plan; and nine, concealed a seven-acre increase in the number of acres assigned to the mixed-use center land use category at either or both the Grandview and 50th and France districts, and at this time, I haven't learned which one or both. In short, the city of Edina has been concealing information from the public, undermining the public's ability to effectively participate in the comprehensive planning process. On April 2, 2019, during the council's public hearing for the 50th and France Small Area Plan, based on what I observed to be pattern falsification, I testified, quote, "The city of Edina has demonstrated at this time that they are not capable of conducting a comprehensive plan development review and approval process," close quote. I call on the Planning Commission to suspend the comprehensive planning process and to maintain it in suspension until such time as the reason for these defects has been publicly identified and reformed, and until such time as the city provides full disclosure to the public regarding all of the intended changes and other purposes contained in the update. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing closed. I'll bring it back to the Planning Commission for comments. Anyone want to start? Go ahead, Jim.
Before I have general comments, regarding the last person who spoke, do we have, I guess, answers to that, to some of those from the city's behalf, or these new comments, older ones, or have there been revisions and explanations?
I can try to speak to that. We certainly haven't been concealing information or intentionally not making changes or making changes. I've got a graphic that shows, if you recall back when we went through, it was one of those five meetings where we talked about the land use categories, and the commission asked, what areas of the city are you proposing changes in the density? It was those two side-by-side maps. I've got that on a slide if you wanted to look at it. I could go through that. So density has in, well, maybe I could just call that up and go through it?
Sure.
Okay, so this is a list of the densities that have changed from the 2008 comprehensive plan to now. So 70th and Cahill, there was an increase from 12 units an acre to 50, I'm just talking the maximum, from a 12-unit max to 50. 44th and France was from 12 to 60. The 50th and France area was a decrease from 100 to 75. The west side of France, and I'll show a graphic that shows this in a minute, the west side of France in general is increasing from 30 to 75. Pentagon Park, the same, from 30 to 75. Southdale and the Galleria sites are increasing from 105 to 150, again, max end, to match the south, where Target and, you know, properties to the south, Centennial Lakes, was 150, to match that up. There's a high-density residential increase from 30 to 60 and 100 units an acre. The 100 units an acre is in an area, again, in the Centennial Lakes area, whereas the Southdale District plan talked about higher densities in between France and York, and so there's a high-density strip in there that goes to 100. And then the Regional Medical District increased from 80 to 100 units per acre. So this, these were the two maps that we handed out when we discussed the land use. So on the left was the existing density, so again, you can see from 30 to 55 units an acre in Pentagon Park, again, 12 to 30 units, again, on this west side of France. The new comprehensive plan increases that to 75. This orange area, that's a high-density district that's increasing from 30 to 60. The Southdale and Galleria sites in the east side of York, you see, is 105. The new plan takes it up to 150. The blue area is the Regional Medical District, goes from 80 to 100, and the high-density district here along the crosstown goes to 60 from 30. This is that high-density within the Centennial Lakes area that goes from 30 to 100 in this area. So those were the maps that were provided. And then I created this map that shows, this is the 44th and France district that goes up to 60, 50th and France, where there's the decrease from 100 to 75. This is the Cahill District that increases from 12 to 50. So that kind of is a big-picture overview of some of the proposed changes.
Thanks, Carrie, for going through that.
And I could add, too, Hila addressed that seven acres that was talked about. It's really about the boundary itself, and the boundary has not changed in that MX district. Again, there were some slight modifications to the acreage, but the boundary lines have not changed.
Great. Any other comments on the comp plan? Just, okay, go ahead, Ian.
Everyone seated comfortably. I have a few things to say. But thank you, thank you. First of all, thanks to everyone. I mean, Bill, Dan, Hila, thank you, and thank the rest of your team, the other Dan, and everyone else that participated. Thank you very much for working with us through a two-year process. It was a, there was a lot of work. I don't know, you know, we spent some time, Joanne and I and the consulting team, we spent some time, and I think we, as a commission, spent some time figuring out what's the allocation of time between working on the comp plan, working on the small area plans, and we realized that any allocation was almost misleading because it would, it could only minimize the total amount of work that went in. The total work on the comprehensive plan itself, separate and apart from the small area plans, was a significant amount of work, and the small area plans may have been an even larger amount of work. And you remember, this was something that was contemplated in 2008, and we knocked it off now in 2018, along with pretty much rewriting the comprehensive plan and having, it said 180 public meetings, I think it was more than that, and I know that there was, like, I personally had informal meetings, I don't know if that's included in that 180 where I met with residents, and along with other people on other small area plans that were working. This has been a tremendous amount of work. Everyone up here on the dais has worked very hard on this, so, you know, I think we should all feel good about the work. In thinking about the small area plan and the process we went through, it kind of struck me that there were three, there were three kind of approaches that came forward with working on the small area plan. One was, this is great, we can, let's come up with all the things that we want in the city of Edina, you know, and there was a lot, you know, people come with all these lists, and it was like Christmas, you know, and writing a letter to Santa. There was another group of people that were like, this is our chance to stop things. We just want, we just want to put a rule in to stop this and stop that and prevent this from happening. And then there was another group, which I would think I fall in the category of, is I don't know if I have any real things that I want or things that I want to stop. I think there are some things, there's some things I want, and there's some things I wish I'd like to, some things we've done in the past that I wish we change or create better rules about. I mean, I think, I think a lot of those are entered onto our work plan for this year and the next year. But generally, from my perspective, the way I approached the comp plan was, it's not a question of what I want or what I want to stop, it's a question of what will happen? What are the trends in the world? What are the, what, what, what's history show us? And history shows us that change happens. And, you know, we can, you know, in the history of Edina, I, just thinking out loud, I mean, I thought of several different changes that have occurred that were all fought tooth and nail from happening. I mean, they were, they were actually kind of bitter, you know, very bitter battles that happened, and now we just consider them a natural part of our community, and they range from the mundane to the extremely serious. Sidewalks, people, sidewalks was a big issue, even, even big, another issue. I grew up in another, in a neighboring community, this was the only, and I played a lot of baseball. This was the only community that didn't have fences on its baseball parks, and that was a big deal. Putting fences in on the baseball parks was a big deal in Edina. Kind of, what, you're going to close the park? You know, that was actually, subject of a lot of debate. Sidewalks, I see, I said sidewalks. Parking ramps at 50th and France, that was a big change that took years. It was a real battle. People fought it. Now I have to believe that there isn't anyone in Edina that wishes we didn't have parking ramps at 50th and France. Similarly, selling alcohol at restaurants was fought. People were, they're ruining the character of our community. I don't think anybody is against that, you know. Restaurants, we have restaurants now that people love. We never, that never existed in the city of Edina. The Westin, that was really fought, and, yeah, it's nice, it's a community center, my, our relatives stay there when they visit us, you know, and it's nice. And then to the extremely serious thing, something that was fought for years in Edina was allowing blacks and Jewish people, black and Jewish people, from living here. It was fought, and now I can't imagine that anyone would think that's something we want to do. And I think these are changes that have happened in society, and I think these are changes that will happen going forward, and I think, you know, change is hard, and I think we got a lot of feedback from people that change is hard. But what I think is even harder is when change happens that you didn't put any plan for, then you scramble, then you run a budget deficit because you didn't want to think about what could happen, but you, there will be demand, and people will start saying, you know, oh, we better fund this now. The comp, I think, I think we did an outstanding job of balancing things. I, I, I've talked to people, for example, I've talked to people who live in the Pearl District of Portland, and I talked about how they developed that district, you know, and from that conversation, and my exchanges, and I had an exchange with Mick Johnson about this, just, just to... Johnson about this just, just this weekend, we did a better job of thinking of the issues that could impact people from development in the Southdale plan than they did in the Pearl District, in terms of step backs above a certain height, in terms of having different height levels at different, on different, different streets, in terms of thinking about stormwater management, in terms of thinking about transportation issues. I think we did a better job. I mean, a lot of credit goes to Mick Johnson, Dan Corneo, Mike Schroeder, but I think a lot of it goes to the, we got a lot of feedback from people, and we got a lot of feedback from this group, and we really did a nice job. I think we did a nice job of balancing where the change is going to occur and where we're going to preserve existing structures. We can't say 100% of the area is going to change, we can't say zero. Change is going to come. Global warming, or, excuse me, climate change i- is coming. I mean, we're getting more rain, we're getting more, we're getting more extremes in temperature. We're going to need to, it's going, climate change is going to be a bigger effect on stormwater management than anything else that we could do. And realizing that we have this 1950s, 1960s infrastructure in lots of our area, and we want to figure out a way to develop it to address climate change is important. The needs for affordable housing, it's not a question really if you want to or you don't want to. We see that we have people living that can't afford, the, the, the housing is so expensive, it's almost, we, we need to figure out strategies to enable people that don't make a lot of money to live with dignity. We just do. I, I don't, the, I work in, I work with, a, a, a certain segment of my work is with, in technology world, so I have the opportunity to interact with people that are much younger than I am. And not all of them, I mean, many people want to live in traditional styles in a suburban neighborhood with two cars and they drive. But an increasing number of people, not, it's not going to be 100% change, but an increasing number of people want to live in a more urban environment where they can park a car or not have a car and walk to restaurants, walk to activity. I spent this weekend in a town where that, outside Minnesota, where that occurs. I walked to the Y, you could walk to all kinds of restaurants, you could walk to a museum, walk to schools, walk to walking paths, and it was, walk to the farmer's market, and it was nice. Not everybody wants to live that way, but an increasing number of people that I talk to do. And so we've allocated, there's going to be these existing neighborhoods, but we're also, we're going to have something for what, what we forecast that are going to, is going to be a desirable way of living in the future for people coming up. And I think we did a great job. Couple other small thoughts. One comment has come up from time to time, and I read about it in The Sun Current recently, it was, it was something we don't hear about as much anymore. Concerns about our allowing teardowns in the city of Edina. Most teardowns are not, very few teardowns are variances. Most teardowns are conforming properties. We, I believe, you know, separate and apart from the planning, from the comprehensive plan, I believe that we, as the planning commission, city council staff, has learned from various things in terms of height and put in different zoning ordinances, and set, changed setback requirements, changed the review process for stormwater as a result of lessons learned. I don't know if the comp plan could have done anything with that, but I know there's some people that spoke, have spoken about teardowns. Also, there's, there's been concern about the redevelopments and the impact on traffic. And I understand that. From what we can tell, though, we, we did look at this a lot in our, in our comprehensive plan review process, and we've looked at it in the small-area plan processes, and we've looked at it in context of individual developments. And generally, where we land, a lot of the developments that are, that we've seen over the last couple of years, that people are concerned about adding traffic, particularly ones we've added, asked, that have received variances or amendments, produce less traffic than a, than a conforming project would have caused. So I, I, I think we've addressed that well. And finally, schools. Schools came up a lot in this discussion, and, you know, what about the schools came up, like, you know, like, whatever we were going to, is going to damage, the schools aren't doing as well, and whatever we're going to do is going to harm the schools. At some point, we heard that schools are going to be overcrowded, then we heard that people were going to leave the schools. And I'll just speak from personal experience, a few personal experiences on this. I have one kid three years out and one kid that has four years to go till graduation. The schools are great. These are, these are, I went to a very good school, by the way. My kids are always sick of what I tell them about all the famous people that had the same teachers I did, and, you know, they can read about, and, you know, or that I knew, and, you know, are, these schools are great. My kid who's three years out got a, got a fantastic education with great teachers. The biggest change, actually, that I've seen over the last few years in the schools is, is tremendous improvement at, and not necessarily from a bad starting point, at a good starting point. Southview Middle School is just tremendously improved, and I think many of us have read the articles that have made local news about things that have happened at Southview in terms of kids winning, coming up with good ideas about, you know, I mean, kids, the seventh and eighth graders are coming up with ideas, kids are coming up with how to deal with others and how to think about things. The principal, I say this from personal experience, the principal's doing an remarkable job. This year, they had an open house, and at the end of the open house, I sat with a friend of mine whose mother used to be on the planning commission, his father taught at the University of Minnesota Medical School, she's an Edina grad. And we looked at each other and said, we want to go to school here now. It was, I mean, this, I, I, I'm concerned about the criticism of the schools. I think that's actually the biggest thing hurting our schools is the criti, if, the people I taught, you know, the criticism of it. When I moved into Edina 20-some years ago, we were the only people on our street that had kids going to Edina schools. Everyone else was going to private schools. I went to a private school one year, many, many years ago, a, a well-known private school in town, and there were so many kids from Edina. You know, like, a kid named John Polad was in my class, and, you know, and there were, kids from Edina have been going to private schools or other schools for a long time. I, I, I just wanted to summarize on that. The, the schools are great. I think this comprehensive plan is going to help them, or definitely not hurt them. And I think we did a great job on this. There's always things we can improve upon, and there's always things that could be done better, but we did a great job, and this was a great plan. Thank you.
All right. Anybody have anything to add on this side? I'm looking, looking at Lou and Sheila, nothing. You're good? Okay. Go ahead, Jimmy.
Just to tack on something quick here. Just taking a step back, like Commissioner Nemirov did. 4,000 pages, right? That's huge. And we have four people here to speak tonight. You know, three in favor, one opposed. So I think someone, if you're new to this process, or if you're tuning in and you've been involved, that's relatively tame, and maybe it's not as huge of a deal, but it, it is a huge deal. I mean, this is the future of our city, this is the guide for our future over the next 10 years. I mean, it encompasses everything, that is huge. And I think this relatively tame meeting is just a testament to the process, a very, very effective, successful process. Commissioner Lee has mentioned it many times, it's not always about the end product, it's about the process to get there. And you can see it, we followed an incredible process, and it was very collaborative, it was insightful. At times, it was very contentious, and we can't forget that. I mean, there was change, a lot of it contemplated here, and we all had a lot of experience, people tuning in with a lot of contentious interactions, but they were constructive. Nothing, it all ended there with a constructive change, compromise. And because of that, it's a relatively tame meeting tonight, and we owe a tremendous amount of gratitude to the consultant team, to the staff, to all fellow commissioners, but most importantly, everyone out there in the community that was really involved. And if you're new to this community, we welcome you to stay involved leading up to this next comp plan in, you know, eight years. It'll, it'll be a blink of an eye until we're there, but we can't, we can't predict the change that we're going to talk about then. But we've done a heck of a job doing it now. And, yeah, it's, it's interesting to have a tame meeting over something so huge, but I think we all owe it to ourselves to, and everyone tune in, it's a huge pat on the back. And we have neighbors, civ, municipally, that it's not so tame, you know, and that's not a fun experience, and we, we did it good here, so I guess congratulations, everyone. That's it.
Thank you. Go ahead, Sheila.
Commissioner Bennett, thank you for, for saying that. And you've actually brought up some, some really, really important points. You know, we on the dais have been so involved in this for two years, and so we feel like we live it and breathe it, and now we're coming to the end of it. And so I think it's important to have a few comments just to say how much we support it, how important it is for us, and how much we really believed in the process. And I think the, the fact that there isn't a lot of comments heard tonight, as Commissioner Bennett mentioned, is a testament to the process, and that people, for the most part, feel like they've been able to speak their mind and things have been reflected. So thanks to the consultants, thanks to my fellow commissioners and the staff, I think we produced a great product, and we should go forward and approve it.
Great. Well, I just wholeheartedly agree with everything that's been said, and it has been a long process, and it's kind of like, hate to say, you almost, you know, it's like, almost kind of sad, this kind of, and, but it has, it has also been mentioned by some of the other speakers tonight, a real comprehensive process with all the other commissions, and I agree, that's been wonderful to get to know all the other commissions. And we have all pledged to stay in touch and really work together to really see that this comp plan gets implemented and, you know, it doesn't just get shelved. So that's what I'm so excited about this, is it really, it's achievable, we can really, you know, do things with it. And, and, yeah, it's just been a great process, very inclusive, and I'm very impressed. You know, I see a lot of comp plans in my work, too, and they can be really dull, and this one's great, you know. And I love the fact that we kept some of the individuality with each of the commission and the chapters. I know we kind of went back and forth in trying to make it all very the same, and, and I'm really happy that we allowed that, you know, just like the individual groups and the commissions to come through. And I feel like they were all really comfortable, too, with having an input on it. So it was really important with the small-area plans, but as Commissioner Nemirov mentioned, too, it was really, the whole thing was really kind of reviewed and updated, and so it's, I'm excited about it. I think it's great. And so I also would support the approval of it, if there's a motion. Where's Todd?
I do think that this process was very extensive and truly did seek out all viewpoints. I do want to explain that I think that this is, I attended a, actually, along with Commissioner Strauss, a, a planning commission training called Beyond the Basics of Planning and Zoning, and they emphasized that your number-one job is to implement the comp plan. That was really it. And it made clear, too, that the comp plan has to stay general. It is not where you get so specific that you can't carry out this vision. Having said that, I do believe that there are parts of it that I, I have concerns about. I'm sure there are, we all have certain parts of it that we have concerns about. Could we have done better? Absolutely. It's, we are all volunteers, we do the best we can, and I think that this is a wonderful product as a result of that process. I do believe that it also needs to be based on, clearly, population trends and the resulting changes that that will bring. That is the only way we will absolutely understand what types of housing and the number of units and the types of units we need, and its corresponding density. Have we figured that all out? No. But because it's a living document, and we've all seen this in the past, it is open to amendments, and I don't think that's a bad thing. As we get to understand population, and we have a housing task force right now, which will have input into what our housing chapter says, it will have input into what the marketing trends say for the types of housing that we need, based on what our demographics and population are going forward. Will this planning commission and the city council be asked to take a look at that? Yes. Will it impact the comp plan? Maybe. So those are things that I just want people to understand, that because it's a living document, it's really something that needs to be updated probably more than just 10 years. And good cities will do that. I mean, and we've done that. We've made amendments along the way when we, when we needed to. So I see that continuing, and I think that's a reason for being very optimistic about this plan. I think the, the basis of it, the roots of it are good, the foundation is good, it came from a good foundation. It is trying to do the best job it can to project the future. It's not perfect, so hopefully it will continue to get better.
Good, great. Any other comments? Go ahead, Lou. You lost your chance.
Yeah. Third time's the charm. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners. I kind of joined the commission when this was, this was kind of midway through, and it was a tremendous amount of work that I never thought I'd be, be involved in, but you guys have done a tremendous amount of work before me and while I've been on the team. And thank you to the consultants who've helped guide us along the way. And something that was said early on was that how, you know, 10 years ago, the plan looked forward to like what's going to happen in 10 years, like areas of change and that sort of thing. And there's a lot of discussion about change in Edina and just, you know, in, in general. And I think it's important to realize that, you know, with, you know, looking at the headlines every day and seeing that Australia's on fire and California's on fire, and, and just today, Venice is underwater in the worst way, you know, in decades. I think we're going to have to end up changing a lot more than even we think we're going to change over the next 10 years. And I think when we look back 10 years from now, we're going to sort of be amazed at how little we were expecting to change. So I think it's going to be a, a big ride for the next 10 years. Thanks.
Great. Okay, is there a motion to? Go ahead. Yeah, please.
It's my pleasure. Thank you for this opportunity to move approval of the, I guess we're moving to recommend to city council to approve the 2018 comprehensive plan.
Is there a second? Second. Are there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. Thanks, everybody. Yeah. So the next item is a report and recommendation, and this is finding that the plans for 70, 75, and 79 Adminson are consistent with the comprehensive plan, tax increment financing Good evening, commissioners. Kind of a tough act to follow. I don't know why I had to come behind the comprehensive plan when, when that was such like the capstone. Nonetheless, this kind of puts it in action. I am coming before you, I'm Stephanie Hawkinson, the Affordable Housing Development Manager for the city, and I'm coming before you this evening--
evening to seek a determination on whether the proposed Amundson Flats development located at 70, 75, 70, 79 Amundson Avenue complies with the comprehensive plan. And there's a resolution that I am seeking approval on. This determination is required by the Minnesota statute prior to a TIF plan being approved. The HRA intends to use Southdale II TIF pooling funds to acquire the site, which requires the modification of the Southeast Dino redevelopment plan and TIF financing plan. To refresh your memory, 70, 75, 70, 79 Amundson is located in the 70th and Cahill Small Area Plan District. This is the former Waldorf Nevin site. It was acquired by the Housing Foundation, who through a competitive RFP process selected MWF properties to develop it. In July, this past July, the HRA agreed to acquire the property from the foundation using Southdale II TIF special legislation pooled funds to acquire, and then sell it to MWF at a discount in order to make the development affordable. The reasons for doing that were multi-fold, but a lot of it had to do with increasing our competitiveness and securing affordable housing, low-income housing tax credits. As required by the special legislation, a TIF district must be created in order to use the pooled funds. The proposed development qualifies for the pooled funds as it will be 100% affordable for at least 25 years. Previously, on May 8 of this year, the planning commission recommended that city council approve preliminary zoning, preliminary plat, and preliminary development plan for the Amundson Flats development here. And so these, to jog your memory, were what you saw at that time. As presented on May 8, the proposed 62-unit development complies with the small area plan. So if there are any questions?
Great. Yeah, go ahead. Carrie.
Yeah, Stephanie, this may, living in that area, I'm driving on 70th all the time, and at 70th and Amundson, right the corner of the property, there's been quite a bit of mostly retaining wall work and cleaning up of the site. Was that just kind of, was that, I assume it's related to this project, but was that part of the 70th Street reconstruction? Or does that, was that work being done in anticipation of the Amundson Flats?
Commissioners, that is a public works project that was independent of this development. It needed to happen, shoring up and replacing that retaining wall. So it was independent for what is being proposed at the site.
Okay. Thank you.
So Stephanie, thank you for your presentation. And just to clarify, just to make sure I'm clear on what we're supposed to be thinking about and determining, this, if I understand correctly, is not about Amundson Flats in particular, and it's not about TIF in particular. It's about whether the comprehensive plan in general allows for this at this site. So we're not going to talk about TIF and what TIF is and whether we like TIF. It's just whether this is appropriate considering the comprehensive plan. Is that correct?
Commissioners, that is correct. It's about, well, it's about this development specifically, and whether or not this development specifically complies with the plan. But no, we are not debating the merits and the pros and cons of TIF financing.
And by compliance, are you talking about height and density and purpose?
Height, density, purpose.
Okay. Not necessarily affordable housing or any of that? It's just whether it's in the comprehensive plan?
Affordable housing only in that is affordable housing supported by the comprehensive plan.
Okay. I just want to make sure so we don't get bogged down in a lot of details that aren't necessary. Thanks, Stephanie.
Yep, good point. Go ahead, Sue.
Stephanie, the TIF funds are a portion of that, in some sense, is to get the public realm portion of the project completed? Is that, is that the purpose of the TIF financing? Was to cover sort of the public realm elements?
Commissioners, not necessarily. The TIF financing, without getting too bogged down in TIF financing, is, they have to comply with a but-for test in whether or not the city or the project could proceed without some public support. The pooled TIF funds, the requirement is that it's for affordable housing.
Okay.
And for the development of affordable housing and elements in the public realm that may support the affordable housing. But it is very specific that anything that the money gets used for has to be directly related to the housing development.
Okay. So, but when we look at the comp plan, and the comp plan says we want these kind of connections, and when this gets developed, I'm thinking the small area plan in particular, these things should happen. Can, does the city have any leverage to make that happen when, as this development goes forward?
Um...
Now that it's becoming TIF? I mean, now you've got skin in the game, right?
I could jump in on that one. The leverage that we had was the rezoning. So as you recall, we want to make that connection from the road to the park.
Right.
So as part of the development agreement, part of the rezoning, they dedicated, I think it was like an 18-foot easement for that connection. So they dedicated that land for us to make that connection. Aside from the TIF, that happened as part of the development agreement.
Okay.
And the rezoning.
Okay. So we have that already, that easement. Okay. I think that...
And that is irregardless of the type of funding that was being used.
Right. But when you say, is it in compliance with the comp plan, that's where I think comp plan is such a broad document. What are we, its goals? So does it meet our goals? I get it, then it meets the goals for the affordable housing. But what else, I guess my question was sort of like, what other kinds of goals would it impact in terms of the comp plan?
Um...
To make that determination that it meets.
I believe the decision that needs to be made is whether or not a four-story, a four-story 62-unit development is in compliant. Is a variance needed? No. Does the proposed development meet what is set out for land use for that site? And for that site, it's four stories and 62 units, at 50 units per acre, which is what is spelled out in the small area plan. So it is not requiring a variance. It is not in conflict with the small area plan.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
I just have two comments. I support an affirmative decision here. It seems basic. But I can only imagine for residents that follow these type of developments or tune in a couple of things. Like, one, TIF is a very, like, polarizing instantly, you know, set of topic. And I don't know if there's a nice way, as a city, we can package information. I could have done homework on this, but package information visually with how projects and changes get financed through that mechanism, so then people understand it better. So that's just a comment. It's complicated. Like, this seems like something new that I didn't understand, and now it's happening again. So I can only imagine someone in the general public. And then, second, affordable housing seems every step of the way, it's difficult to get that in place. And it's going to be interesting seeing 10 years if there's an easier way to get something like that. I feel like we have to have all these hoops that have to get jumped through, both on the state and local level, and like, in the city. And here's just another one of them. It's like, is, could there be a better way? Just comment. That's it. But like, my goodness, you know?
Commissioner Bennett, I wish there were. Affordable housing is extraordinarily complicated. It takes three years to pull together the financing for a development. It's a very different beast than market rate housing.
I have a couple of questions. But I believe, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe in recent Sun Currents, there've been inserts for the, when the city submits, there's a, there's a four-page document, or a four-page, like, city newsletter that goes in the Sun Current. And I believe that a couple of the recent ones have tried to explain TIF. And, you know, it's inside, oh...
Yes.
I want to be in her study group.
[laughing]
It's hard, though. I mean, it comes, it's like with the mailer from the grocery store and the, you know, all the things you can buy by mail. So it might look like an ad, and maybe there's other, better ways of delivering it. I don't know. It's a hard thing. But I thought the documents were actually pretty good. I mean, it's just, it's tough to get that message broadcast. Questions I have are kind of following up on my study group partner's questions, and that's kind of a process question. And I thought you, Stephanie, explained it pretty well, but I want to just dive a little, one step further. It's like, at the planning commission, you come, I think, as you stated it fairly well this evening, it's a compliance with the comp plan issue. Obviously, many people have questions about, is this a good idea? Is this a good project? Is use of TIF a good project? I'm probably giving you leading questions, but you give a much different presentation to the city council, don't you, about what the TIF will be used for, and the merits and the pros and cons of giving TIF to this project? And then that's the place, the city council then has a discussion about, is it a good idea? We're the compliance people. They're the, is it a good idea for this project people? Is that, is that a fair way of looking at it?
Commissioner Nemirov, commissioners, I will be going to the HRA tomorrow to discuss this project. There will be a more complete discussion on what is TIF, you know, how, what, how it's being used here. There will be a public hearing at city council in December, where this project is being brought forth again to discuss TIF. I want to be clear, though, this is, this is a, the TIF pooled funds from Southdale II under the special legislation that expires at the end of 2021. Now, this is outside your scope, but just to let you know, the intent is not to capture the increment at the site. The intent is to be able to use those funds that are being pooled for the purpose of affordable housing that will go away, or be returned to the taxing authorities, and then we'll get 20% back. And so the HRA has already agreed to acquire this property. We're just trying to figure out the most, the best source of funds with which to acquire it. And we have some that have really stringent strings attached to it, and some that are very flexible. Well, the TIF special legislation has the most strings attached to it, and this project would qualify. So why not use the source that has the most strings attached and free up the sources that are most flexible for projects where there aren't other sources? So that is one of the rationales for doing this. It just so happens that you have to create this, go through the machinations because of legislation, to create a TIF district, even if you're not capturing the increment.
And really, what we're asked to do is just speak to whether this particular building is consistent with comprehensive plan. That's the only thing we're doing.
That is...
Has nothing to do with anything else today.
Commissioners, that is correct.
That's a good reminder. Thank you.
The only thing you need to do is to say that this building complies with the comprehensive plan.
With that, is there a motion? So there, my screen just went blank, so I just lost everything. So there's a resolution that we're approving, is that correct?
Correct.
It just came back. So does anyone want to make a motion to approve the resolution?
I move that we approve resolution number 2019-21, finding that the Amundson Avenue Tax Increment Financing Plan conforms to the general plans for the development and redevelopment of the city.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Motion carries. Thanks. Let's see. Next, we've got any correspondence and petitions? Have there been any? Carrie?
No.
Thank you. Any chair and member comments? Go ahead, Jer.
Need to do this on mic or...? Okay. As mentioned, Susan and I attended a planning session, which we both found, you know, very, very helpful and informative. I think it was a little, you know, advanced from the one that was conducted in St. Louis Park, which there was quite an attendance. This one kind of was, was a little, dived a little deeper. And I, there are things to follow up on, but I just wanted, there were a couple points that were really quite provocative that happened towards the end of the day. And, not that we're getting all punchy, but it was, moving on. And one of them had to do with, one, one of the presenter was a land-based, longtime planner with, who Carrie has, has favored for my worth. And the other one, she was an attorney representing a number of municipalities, as well as governmental units, the Met Council. And, and this one was a caution about open meeting law, and being, especially with social media and email, that it's completely appropriate for the staff to contact the planning commission as a group. What she was cautioning about was replying all, and, and she had a number of examples. So when staff contacts, the commission members respond to staff, not to everybody, because you create a chain. And it's, that was just a, everybody kind of went, oh, yeah, it seems. And she gave some examples where it really went south on them. Here's another one, which, it was late in the day, and I wished I could have pushed back or got some clarification, was the process was a big topic of the whole, of how we do things. But visiting sites as individuals was discouraged. Now, this needs some follow-up, because I don't think anybody here thinks that's not the way to do it. And I'd like to be able to get some further information, and maybe, Carrie, if that's a connection, or if that's a subject that we could dive deeper into. But she was pretty explicit that the information you gathered was gathered collectively. And an individual visit was you're out there, and I assume the worst case would be engaging with neighbors or the owner, or you're having, but I've never really run into anybody on site that I've ever had to engage with. So maybe that's different. But that kind of caught me by surprise. Yeah.
I actually dealt with this once when I was clerking for a judge, where it was an environmental case. And we were, we were at the highest appellate level. But I was actually helping the chief judge at that time with this case, and it looked like a slam dunk, looked like it was decided correctly by the lower court, and we were trying to figure it out. But that the chief judge was a real networker, and he was like, I think the judge went to the site and came up with his own evidence. And then that case got sent back. And...
Well, that...
Because the chief was like, this is totally reasonable. That was a reasonable decision. But I think he went to the site.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that's, she was very much coming from a legal background here. And then the other one is just another one for Carrie, is that I think they would be an excellent source for our discussion on form-based zoning. I mean, they, their experiences, but I think they would, that would be, we had talked about exploring that more in their work sessions or whatever, and...
Again, that's not on our work plan. We talked about providing you with, you know, copies of studies, things like that. But being it's not on our work plan to invite someone in, I'm not so sure we want to go there unless it's something you all wanted to add to your work plan, and then you have, we have to run that by the city council?
Well, I think that's certainly something for further discussion. And the other one is, I can make available from, from the seven hour, some excellent suggestions, some real basic books on planning commission, you know, subjects, you know, some real, like a basic, real, real fundamental stuff that, and I was going to type those up and make them available, but we'll type, well, I'll do that.
That'd be great.
Yeah. Thank you. That's...
Thank you.
Thank you. I know that Roger always, whenever we have our training, he always says, never reply all. So, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I think the, the visiting the sites, I think it is good for you to visit the site. But when we're having your discussion here, you disclose, this is what I saw. So then it is part of the record, and everybody has, everybody has access to that information.
Okay. That's a good point.
Oh, I had one, one thing I put in my notes that I thought was useful. It was specifically about public hearings. You know how many times, if we're doing, I guess it's to approve a variance, and we do the sort of friendly amendment? Is that okay or not? There was actually, actually someone who asked that. Can you, can you add things to it? They actually said, they recommended that you do that. Because what they said, what that was happening up here is you should be working through and understanding of everything you've heard, taking into account the public hearing as well. That's, it goes all the way back to the Constitution. That's due process. So yes, obviously, you just heard it that day. So to say, I want to change something or, you know, add this particular requirement that you're going to look out for this, you know, or not encroach on that, is part of the process. And I know that there has been some bias sometimes that, no, we just don't change things. But I was encouraged to hear that, that that is an indication that you're coming closer to understanding what you want and how it should read. So that was my key takeaway, I thought.
Yeah. I missed the last couple of meetings, so I'm not sure if it was noted or discussed, but the Metro, what? Metro Transit Staff has recommended the France Avenue alignment for the E-line, BRT, so that means it would come down along 44th Street to the west to France Avenue, down France Avenue, and then pass the hospital and over to the Transit Center. So that I think is, is good. I mean, it helps with, you know, the planning that we've done, the small area plans. I mean, it really dovetails with that. It's like, you know, you need land use and you need transportation, you know, they kind of tie together. So, so that was really encouraging. I thought that was a, it's not final yet, but that's the staff recommendation. Also, I joined, I'm the alternate for Jan Callison's district, District 6 on the Hennepin County Bicycle Advisory Committee, so I'm on that now. Thought it was interesting that the Collins Dictionary Word of the Year is climate strike. So good old Greta comes back to haunt us. And then one final thing is, is, you know, in our neighborhood, in Morningside, there's a number, we have, we have narrow but very deep lots in general. And we have a lot of redevelopment, like in a lot of places, or tear downs, I should say, like in a lot of places in Edina. And we have a tree ordinance, and yet a couple of years ago, the house, the lot behind us was, was, had a redevelopment there, and now the lot across the street from us has. And the one behind us was one and a half lots wide, and the one across the street is two lots wide. And on each of those lots, they clear cut the entire lot. So even though we have a tree ordinance, I mean, apparently it has no teeth because, you know, 200-year-old oaks, you know, completely clear cut from both lots. So I don't know, I don't think that's something that's on our plan. But a recommendation to the city council that, you know, we need more teeth and that. I mean, because if anything, I mean, one, from just a neighborhood view, and, you know, our neighbors practically held hands and cried when we saw them doing it. But in addition to just, you know, beauty, it affects, you know, it's part of climate change, right? I mean, there are countries around the world that are planting millions of trees, and here we are, 200-year-old oaks, and we're, you know, cutting them down. And I presume it's because, I mean, there, these are huge lots. I assume it's because of the, getting machinery in there rather than anything to do with the house itself. But anyway, I mean, and there are several other double lots down our block that the same thing happened to. And it's, you know, I've been here 11 years, and the neighborhood is completely transformed with, with trees dying from diseases, and that's only getting worse now, again, partly because of climate change, but also invasive species. You know, our, our street is like, it feels like you're in some new excerpt somewhere. You know, it doesn't even feel like you're in some old leafy neighborhood. But anyway, it's just a personal thing.
Could, could I speak to that? So if that's happening, in defense of our tree ordinance, it does have teeth, and if someone does that, our forester has been going out and he'll measure the stump, and he'll figure out what was there, and then require them to plant trees retroactively. So if you want to let me know where that has happened?
Sure.
We, if the stumps are still there, maybe we can do something about those sites if they just recently happened.
Great, thanks.
Just to add on that, that is on our work plan, trees. We did have that mentioned, so...
It's on everybody's work plan, every commission, and so council's going to have to think about what that's going to look like. Is it a, I can't even speak to what might happen, but...
Right. But it was, we had that kind of...
It was a common theme in everyone's...
Catch-all, and, yeah, everyone, so, yeah. But yeah, that's so sad. Okay. Sure?
Lou, you were, you kind of missed the last TDM meeting, or two? Anyways, I would have left you to speak on it, but I guess I will. The TDM work group, which is primarily Transportation Commission people, and then Lou and me on the planning mission, and inside it?
Mary Brindle.
Mary Brindle, a city council member. Okay. We're just about ready to come out with a TDM plan. So much like the Affordable Housing Plan, this is a TDM plan. Hopefully, the goal is to get that incorporated into a TDM ordinance like the city of Bloomington has. So the question has been put, and actually a request, that I go to the community development director, and this work group would like to have some feedback among a select group of two or three developers to see what their concerns might be. Because obviously, these are restriction, not restrictions, requirements, we will be putting on new development, a TDM plan. So the idea is better get some feedback to see whether this is even practical. So...
Is...
It's something you want to answer today.
So I don't know a lot about this, but, yeah. So is it something that maybe we want to bring to the city council for them to say, yeah, this has been vetted enough that we're ready to introduce this out to the public?
It is going to go to the council. I guess this group felt to do their due diligence because they think one of the first questions is going to be is, well, is there any buy-in on the development side? What are the, what are some of the flags?
So kind of developer feedback?
Yeah, it would just be very informal, kind of just that. So we can talk about that later. But that's sort of the process that they're at. I think they're still trying to have that plan in front of the city council, probably actually coming before the planning commission, then the city council, before the end of the year.
Well, I think that's it. I just, maybe just do one last pitch. Like we said, people can still make comments on the comp plan, and they should go to Better Together, to that website, and...
December 3rd is the city council meeting.
I'm sorry. And December 3rd is the city council meeting, another public hearing. Yep. Yep. So anyway, can still make comments, so. Anything else? Is there a motion to close?
A motion to close?
Public hearing.
Or close, close the meeting.
End the meeting or whatever. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, I'll say aye.
Aye.
All right. Great. Thank you.